Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this regular meeting of the Vada City Council. It is 6:05 PM on Wednesday, February 5th, 2025. Roll call. Mr. Daly.
Here.
Mr. Hall.
Yeah.
Ms. Goff.
Here.
Mr. Ferguson is absent. Mr. Parsons.
Here.
And Mr. Shai, I am here. We have quorum. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, authoritative, justous for all.
Mayor's report. Mayday meetings have started. The next meeting is coming up on this Monday, February 10th, at 5:30 at the tracks. They need volunteers to help out, even if it's little, they could use your assistance. Number two, Fourth of July Committee, they've started having regular meetings as well. Contact Ken Josselin if you're interested in helping. He's got a team of six now that are helping. They had one of their first big meetings last week. They're talking about all kinds of different events between having stuff downtown earlier in the day and then an hour before fireworks move the festivities up to a different set of events up in the, in the school field, so it can be an all-day kind of, kind of event. So they'll be coming to you with a presentation at some point to get permission to do different things and shut the roads down and all that. So lots of big ideas and great volunteers. So again, if you're interested in helping, talk to them. Any members of the council have any reports tonight? All right. Agenda approval. I don't have any modifications.
I make a motion that we approve the city council agenda for February 5th, 2025.
A motion from Mr. Parsons to approve the agenda. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Ms. Goff, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Randy, could you speak up, please? Thank you. All right, gotcha. Any opposed? Motion carries. Hope it was not presumptuous that I assumed you were going to be an aye, Randy. Figured I would. Minutes approval.
I make a motion that we approve the city council meeting minutes for January 29th, 2025 as written.
A motion from Mr. Daly to approve the minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Parsons. Discussion. All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval.
Make a motion, we approve the voucher for the beginning of February 2025 at $24,260.71.
A motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the vouchers as written. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Goff. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher report, this county sheriffs.
Good morning.
Good morning. Afternoon, evening.
Good morning.
For the month of January 2025, 213 citizen contacts, six traffic stops, offshoot calls were 15, and there were four misdemeanor arrests.
Nice.
Any questions?
Questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Easy one. Quiet month. All right, moving on to city business. Items one through four, these all relate to the development-related code updates. At the last council meeting, we did have the public hearings on them. Our city planner, Kristen Peterson, who's online tonight as well, went over them thoroughly. Hopefully you all have gotten a, get a chance to look at them again throughout this week. Not a lot of, uh... Nothing's changed on them, so... But she is here to answer any questions.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance 2025-01, adding chapter 2.82 Development Agreements.
Cut me off for my monologue. We have a motion from Mr. Parsons to approve ordinance 2025-01, adding chapter for development agreements. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Daly. Discussion? More monologuing?
Monologue.
Our planner is here. She could give a, give a...
Brief summary?
Summary, if you'd like, of what the Development Agreements ordinance is about.
All right, well, first of all, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. And I, when I first joined, I could see you. The camera's turned off. I don't know if you can see me, but Development Agreements is just a, a way for the city and developers to kind of talk through in advance what the requirements might be. It allows more flexibility, a little more innovation. You know, maybe they might not be able to meet setback requirements, but they might offer some other public benefit. But essentially, it's a way for the city and the developers to come to an agreement in advance. And there's a little more certainty for both parties moving forward with, you know, usually they're applied to like subdivisions or mixed-use developments. And it's a nice tool to have in your development code that's just offered. It doesn't mean, somebody has to request it. It's not going to just simply be offered out there. So I can answer any more questions about it, but it's pretty straightforward.
I like the part about the mixed-use development. Obviously, in our city, we have different zones, right? We have commercial zones, industrial zone, residential zone. Well, what if someone wanted to create a neighborhood? They had a parcel, they want to create a neighborhood, and they wanted to put a small store in there. Normally, our code wouldn't allow it because commercial's not there, assuming this is a residential area. But they could have a development agreement that would allow it as part of the agreement. And of course, planning committee would look at it, city council would look at it, and would make sure that was right for that area. Allows, like she said, allows flexibility in our, in our zoning for, for different use cases.
Great tool to have.
Great.
And it's a normal thing that cities would have in their, in their city code. It's more unusual that we don't have it. All right. More discussion? We have a first and a second on this. More questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of ordinance 2025-01 for development agreements, say aye.
Aye.
Randy, I didn't catch you.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Hopefully, you're not feeling like I'm trying to influence your vote, Randy, by asking you after you don't, after I don't hear you.
I can feel him thinking, doggone mute button, come on!
Yeah. Well, on the phone, you gotta do like the star six.
Star six.
Star six.
You got it anyway. All right, moving on to item number two, ordinance 2025-02, adding chapter 2702 for the permitting process. This actually comes out of a, a new state requirement for cities and building departments. There's flexibility in how you ex, how you deal with the new state requirement. This was one of the ones that was, uh, one of the options put forward by the city attorney. I'll let Ms. Peterson talk about it.
Okay, so thank you, Mary. You're referencing the Senate Bill 5290 that was enacted last year, or in 2023, I mean. And basically, it comes down to the requirement to streamline permitting. And so this option provided by the city attorney is a great one. It really just explains to applicants the exact steps they need to follow if they're going to submit a land use permit. And it also tells staff how to process the application. So it just gives certainty and it outlines like the timeline requirements. One of the great things is it divides up the different permit types into type one, type two, and type three. Where a type one permit would be a basic permit approved administratively by your city staff, no public hearings required, and it lists all the permits that are, that fall into that category. Type two will require some noticing, and type three are those legislative-type actions that would need to go to counsel or the hearing examiner. But it outlines all of the steps. It will say, okay, here's the time period. Now, the city has to respond within 28 days to say your application's complete. And then it'll tell you the next step, the next step, when notices are required, and you know, like who to mail the notices to within 300 feet. So essentially, it outlines the steps and it allows for more predictability for the applicants and staff. And it's a pretty streamlined process that I've used in other jurisdictions. So, and I was pleased to see the attorney put together a nice pathway forward for anyone proposing development, whether it's a homeowner doing a remodel or a new developer coming in with, you know, a hundred lot subdivision, something of that nature. So it's a very helpful tool, another helpful tool.
Cool. Yeah, it does. It adds a whole lot of organization to the process for both the city and the applicant, so.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance 2025-02, adding chapter 2702 permitting process.
A motion by Mr. Parsons to approve 2025-02. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Daly. More discussion and questions? All right, all those in favor of 2025-02 for the permitting process, say aye.
Aye.
Randy, I didn't catch your load?
I did.
Thank you. Any opposed? Motion carries. Sometimes I wonder if it doesn't catch it because everyone in here is talking at the same time he's trying to talk, and it's like one way. All right, item number three, council consider ordinance 2025-03, amending section 72368, reducing PUD size. So this is just a number change in the code. It's going to reduce the PUD minimum size from three acres down to two acres, uh, letting, letting planned unit developments be utilized in more places in the city. Of course, as, as before, it's by request, and it has to go through planning committee and city council, and so... But, uh, so an example for a PUD would be, um, well, the gist of a PUD is that your, your subdivision, your subdivision development is up against a critical area, so a creek or a wetland or something. And this inhibits your ability to utilize your entire property because of the setbacks. And so what this agreement would do is the developer would say, all right, city, I will give you all of that property in exchange for having slightly reduced lot sizes for my, for my homes. And, uh, and it's kind of a win-win. They get something out of it, the city gets that property and can maintain it and, or, or keep it, keep it...
Natural.
Natural. And so it's kind of, it's, uh, it's a, it's a good thing. And so the idea behind this was reducing it from three acres down to two acres is that it'll give more, more possibility for its use around town. Because, as you know, we are surrounded by a, by a creek, and we have wetlands and other creeks that cut through the middle of the city. So there's plenty of opportunity to, to use this. Did I steal your thunder, Kristen?
I, I think you sounded up perfectly, so thank you.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 2025-03 for reducing PUD size.
A motion from Mr. Daly to approve ordinance 2025-03. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Parsons. Discussion and questions? All right. All those in favor of 2025-03, say aye.
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 Did I catch you?
Hi. I was waiting for Randy. I didn't want him to be last again.
I still haven't heard him. Did I hear, did I hear Randy? Randy, did I hear you?
Aye.
All right, okay. Any opposed? All right, motion, motion carries. Why don't mess with me? Like a, like a machine. All right, moving on to item number four, council consider ordinance 2025-04, amending sections, chapter 25 for short subdivisions. But Kristen, take, take the lead on this one.
Yeah, this is another quick summary, but this one increases the number of lots to process a short subdivision. So right now, if you have four or fewer lots, you can request a short plat. If it's five or more, you have to do the long plat. And the difference is, it, there's more process involved. A long plat requires a public hearing and going through CIPA checklists and just a lot more process. The idea would be to increase the number of lots for a short plat. And if there's no critical areas on the site, you don't have to do CIPA, and it can be approved administratively. It's a pretty neat process. It's allowed by state law, so it'd be increasing the maximum number of lots allowed for a short plat to nine. That's, that's per state law. And then it's also just making some edits to the code to specify what a short plat is or short subdivision, and also changing the definitions for that and long plats to be ten lots or more into the night, or five lots or more. So it's just some cleanup to allow for this new tool as well, which will just make things a little bit easier for anyone that proposes a subdivision with nine or fewer lots. That's what it comes down to.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance 2025-04, the short divisions.
Motion by Mr. Parsons to approve ordinance 2025-04. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Daly. More discussion and questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of ordinance 2025-04, amending the sections for short subdivisions, say aye.
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 All right, I vote for all four council members. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Thank you, Ms. Peterson.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Have a great day.
Thank you. Drive safe.
Item number five, council to discuss legalization of marijuana businesses. As I said a couple of meetings before, I provide a lot of information to council. Has, does anyone have any input or direction on that at this point?
Well, we can't just go with what the state requires.
The state minimum?
Yeah. That going into a deep ordinance, and then when they have to go before the council, before they could do anything. Like Jason said, I don't think there's...
There's, there's no money in it anymore, and there's no, like, like when the business was going to come down across the restaurant, everybody that had, um, an industrial site wanted to put in for that marijuana license to, to, because it was the get rich quick thing. It's not anymore. The state's, state's not making really any money off of it, even growing it themselves. The Lewis County has a moratorium on how many stores can be in Lewis County, so we're in Lewis County. That's why there's only a handful in Chayliss, and there's a ton in Calix County. It's because there's a moratorium on it. We're so far away from a populated area that it's so, so unlikely that there would be any kind of a pot store put in Vader. I mean, there's no large, there's no other reason, there's no reason to come to Vader. So I mean, it's, it's just, the only place that it would have been would have been at the freeway, which they tried, and because there's a moratorium on it, they didn't let them put it in there. And that's the only place that it would have been reasonable, right next to the freeway. The places that we have parks, I mean, this whole part of town's safe. That whole part of town we made safe. We got a school in the middle. We got a park on that corner, and it could cover like that end of the city. Very, very little areas that it would even be possible. So we're talking, I, I, I don't see it even, even being a possibility. So I'm, I'm thinking with the safeguards that we put in place, it's free money, and it's just, I, I would think that we could put it towards a specific project every year and, and go from there. But I, I really, I don't want a pot store here either, or a manufacturing place, but I don't think it would ever come here. So, but I do think that we deserve the taxes that are generated on it as a, as a community, because it's free money. That's my feeling.
Okay. So are we, I haven't yet requested anything from the city attorney. I was, I was not wanting to spend any money on it just until we knew what direction we were going. So do I have a, can I get a motion from the council to send this to the attorney and start spending some money on it and having an ordinance drafted up?
I'll make a motion that we send information to the attorney and start drafting a motion, or start drafting an ordinance for making our town a green dot.
Okay. Your motion by Mr. Daly to start changing the ordinance for marijuana businesses. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Ms. Goff. More discussion? Questions? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
All right, three to one. We'll get that off for the attorney. Any other elected official comments tonight?
The city does not have control of CenturyLink, just to put it out there.
To put it out there, yeah.
Just to put it out there. Joe's got enough stuff to worry about, but everybody calls CenturyLink. That's all you could do is tie up the lines in China or Hong Kong or...
And they'll just hang up on you eventually, because they'll say, we're going to transfer you, and then they'll go, we can't process your call right now.
Yeah, they hung up on me.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I told them I was going to go with the resident.
Oh.
Well, Christina is after him. If anybody can get him, it'll be her.
She's the one that told me it was down too.
Yeah.
So I knew, I knew someone was on, on him already.
Well, thank you for that observation, Mr. Parsons.
Did the, did Eighth Street, the water main? Did somebody, I heard that it just popped.
It did.
So nobody, we just happened to...
Nobody was even working there.
So, so, yeah, the, so that, so that was the gist of it. So we all, we already, the, the whole reason why they're replacing all those old lines is because they're, they're old and brittle, and they're breaking all the time. Ninth Street in particular is really bad. Actually, down below the hill, all the pressure from above pushing down, it would always break down here at the corner of Ninth and...
At Christine.
Ninth and B.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and so they, they excavated it next to the old line. They put the new line in, you know, all the trucks and the vibration and the new rocks and all that.
Water pressure changing.
Yeah, and, and it, it, you know, the next day, it ruptured, the old line, which is why they're...
I should have got my kayak and rowed down the road.
But the cut line is B and Seventh, the CenturyLink line.
Oh, okay, so that was a separate thing, was it?
And that didn't seem to happen at the same time for...
Did they eight-one-one it? I, that's what I was thinking too. I'm like, oh, I thought it was up there. Did, who hit it?
Well, the, the people that are putting in the water line...
Right next to the highway.
When they hit it, those people, we just happened to be outside getting in our car, and they were just like in their trucks and gone. You could see it there. We knew something had happened.
They hit the phone line?
What, no, when they hit the water line.
Oh, out, out there.
Yeah.
That was a separate, that was a separate incident.
Or whatever, yeah. But it was at, like Jason said, I think it was at this, kind of the same time as the, they hit the...
Who hit the CenturyLink?
It's got to be H, H.
It's got to be them too.
The water?
The people that are putting in the, the lineup.
Because the fiber's all in already. I mean, all the, all the shots are in for the fiber, so there's no...
Yeah. So I don't, I don't have the, the background on the, the internet story. I mean, that's not, you cut a, cut a phone line, it's not quite as dramatic as cutting the water line.
Yeah. I, I knew right when I didn't have internet that all that digging did something. And then I'd seen them working on that box down across from kind of your house by Melissa's house. And, but that's a new box. I think that's...
Yeah, because they are, they're putting them all in. Yeah.
Yeah. So, I don't know, I'm waiting. Waiting for internet at my house.
Well, the fiber update, like Mr. Parsons said, he's on, he's on one of the early, early testers. I talked to the installers. The PUD has contracted with Paramount, a contractor. They, they, they do install, but they also are going to be one of the ISP options. But you shouldn't, you shouldn't confuse the two. The install is separate from the ISP option. But they are going to do a handful of people that are going to be early adopters to test the system. Mr. Parsons is lucky enough to be one of those, and they're going to be going in next week.
Monday, they're going to put it in and then run the drops, and then Tuesday or Wednesday, they come out and hook it up.
So that's for the fiber, and then for the rest of the, the rest of the, the normal folk that aren't early, early adopters, it's going to be, still this month, but it's just going to be a, a week or two later, so.
So you have an aerial and an underground going in? So I, what I understood from the very first thing is if it goes underground into your house, that's how it's going to come into your house? And if it goes aerial into your house, it's going to go aerials? Do you have one going into your house and then one going to...
I have, um, I paid $200 because I have, my shop is on a meter, and my house is on a meter. And so they're running the underground to my shop, and then the one to my house is aerial.
You have two separate services.
Two separate services.
Are you two separate services?
Because my shop is way over here, and my thing is over here, and the power box is right there.
And the little tower things that shoots it over to your house?
On the router wall. It only go about a hundred feet. Yeah.
Ethernet cable across the yard?
What's that?
An ethernet cable across the yard?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know. Well, I'm not sure how I'm going to do it, but...
Okay.
But this coming, fiber is coming this month.
Part of that cost from having six acres.
Yeah. I got a bid for running power from the shop, because it's all underground.
It's new.
Yeah, it's newer. And I was going to go from the shop to the house and then get rid of the airdrop on the house, so I had just one bill. But the wire went up. It was...
Ten thousand.
Thousands of dollars to run that wire to the house.
It's like, it's like, I don't know, $50 a foot or something stupid like that. It's ridiculous. It's like this being around, you know?
All right.
Any other elected official comments?
Oh, where we, oh.
Yeah, we're...
Do we know when they are going to fix, get that covered up, D Street?
Um, I thought they were going to do it this, they're going to, actually, no, what, they, they were, the intent was to wait until they were really, when they were ready to decommission that line. So they've got D Street closed just to prevent people from driving over it, because they don't want to shake it anymore than necessary. So it's just preemptive. They're just going to be careful so that we don't rupture it anymore. But, uh, yeah, they're supposed to be closing it up soon. I thought they were going to do it this week.
Okay. I gotta get my trailer up tomorrow. I gotta get my trailer out tomorrow.
But I know today they had this, the alley, I guess it would be the, it would be the D Street alley. They had a giant six foot hole that they dug out in the alley and had a guy in it. They're putting one of those big valves in it today. So I know they're, they're still working out there.
And they're going to clean up, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's in the permit to leave the area as, as you found it, so we can request that. I'm sure Dan with Lewis County, he's not going to let it stay a mess.
Because even 10th Street, they have holes all where they were doing
We can, we can make sure to follow up on that. Dan and Darren, they're, they're going to be hawks on it, so. All right, any other official comments? Going once, going twice, meeting's adjourned at 6:35 PM. Thanks, Randy.